... We have an agenda before us. Are there any corrections?
Yeah, she made this conference.
Motion second to approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried. Minutes, June six eight two thousand thirteen. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Eight thousand fifteen. What'd I say?
Sixteen.
I'm just two years behind.
I'll make a motion to approve our minutes from June eighth twenty fifteen.
I'll second. This is Gary's second by Rick. The June eighth two thousand fifteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried.
You were just checking to see if they had attention, right?
I was checking myself. Any comments from the general public? Anybody want to say something that's out of the question? All right, well, we're ahead. Lisa Ryan, we have a new front of the center. We have a request and a discussion. We're looking for a meeting.
Um, so Carl asked me to come just briefly update you on the homemade Iowa process and where we currently are. Um, I did take the liberty, I thought, um, we were designated in March, um, and...
There you go.
We were designated in March as a homemade Iowa county, um, and as such, part of the plan requires that we prominently display the designation. Mid-Iowa Growth Partnership, our regional economic development group, has agreed to pay for eight signs, and then the four signs or the four stars that you see in pink, the city of Humboldt has agreed to pay for, um, for Humboldt proper. So I, what you see is the map that I sent to the DOT, and he sent back very specific locations that are, that are around those stars, so, um, and marked the pavement for us. So at this point, um, we need to have the signs installed. Um, there is one near Runwick that is actually in the city of Runwick, so they need to sign off on that. The city of Humboldt's already signed off on theirs. So I did send the permit applications in for each of the signs you see with the exception of the one near Runwick. We're still waiting on the mayor to sign that one, um, and then we'll send that in as soon as that's finished. So, that's the last leg of this process. Um, once we get the signs up, we can start actively marketing the program, um, and the incentives. So...
Listen, what's the cost per sign? You know, rough estimate?
Yeah, it's about sixty-five dollars.
A piece, okay. Thank you.
What's the cost? This script is...
I mean, everyone's going to pay for that.
Okay, so then the installation is...
Um, drawn by the organization, so in this case, it would be HCA, there's the cost of installation.
So who's going to install them? Secondary roads, or...
Um, the city of Humboldt Street Department will install the, the city of Humboldt sign.
These four here.
Yep, and then we have a couple of trinkets. We can either give them to the community that's nearest that side and ask them to install them. Um, the only issue we would have with that is, I'm not sure they're going to install them outside of city limits. So, um, in this case, and in, and in the case of, of all the other communities, it just made more sense for secondary roads to do it, just because they have the equipment, um, and what that...
Like Gilmore City, is the one in Gilmore City on the city limit?
It is not.
That one's okay, it's all right.
No, it is not.
Well, and if they're out in the rural areas, you gotta, you locate since, you'd want to make sure all that's done right. It'd be better to have the secondary roads do it.
Right, right, and, um, they have access to the equipment, so for example, asking the city of Humboldt to do it, they don't have a trailer to put a front loader on to drive it thirty-five mile, you know?
Well, no, they wouldn't want to do the ones out. They can do the ones inside the city, or, and they're not, are they going to charge anything, do you believe? Okay.
This is a very good program. It's going to be able to affect the whole county.
Right.
Right.
You guys returning, you might just enlighten us a little bit, like, some of the things that...
Oh, sure, certainly. Yep, certainly.
Really, asset to the nation to get it going.
Sure. So Humboldt County Development will pay for the following incentive: a hotel voucher for one night's stay, a restaurant meal voucher, um, and a welcome basket, and that's to get the veteran into our community to interview, um, and then from there, they'll receive the first two months of rental assistance, not to exceed a thousand dollars, or down payment assistance, um, in the amount of thirty-five hundred, if they use the rental assistance and the down payment assistance is always twenty-five hundred. Um, a tax evasion on the first seventy-five thousand is left value at any of the subdivisions, um, sixty dollars in rec bucks, um, and our thought there was to get the family immersed in the community. Um, guiding tours of the hospital and the school, there's a five-hundred-dollar cash bonus if the veteran chooses to use a local realtor, and then, um, we have a five-hundred-dollar cash bonus for the first five months.
Any where in the county, ma'am?
I'm sorry?
Anywhere in the county.
Yeah, is it exclusive to anybody?
That's correct.
I mean, you could live in another town, still get the recreation stuff.
The seventy-five thousand in assessed value in any of the subdivisions would obviously pertain to the...
Right, right, that would, but, right.
But the rest, correct, correct.
But like, the, the free passes, or the credit on the passes, which you, no matter where you live.
Correct.
So Mid-Iowa Growth is paying for all the signs, or just...
Eight of the twelve.
And the ci- who's paying the other four again?
The city.
Okay.
The city's big one.
So, um, in Mid-Iowa Growth, they have funding for this, or they're just promoting it?
Yeah, when we budgeted, we, we asked the communities that were going to try to obtain it, and for now, there's just two of us. So Mid-Iowa did allocate funding for the three counties that are...
Oh, so they, so they had some funding aside for these. They, they want to keep, they want to promote this too, of course.
Right, right.
Okay. So, what I'd like to do then, I'm gonna, I would like to make a motion that we have the county engineer, how, how soon do you want these up?
You know what? I have to get the information back, and I have to get the signs, uh, they deliver them to the local DOT shop. Do we have one here in Humboldt?
No.
No.
Claryn.
Claryn. But, okay, that, we'll figure that out.
Yeah, we'll get them.
But how soon do you think these are coming, or how soon? I mean, you want these up pretty quickly, don't you?
Yeah, but I bet you it takes probably three to four weeks to actually physically have the signs in hand. The permit should be done here this week, if I just look it back.
Okay.
But I'm guessing that maybe...
So if the signs were to come in, and we, another thirty day, I mean, shoot, I'm, I'm just going to make a motion to that effect. I, I want to make a motion that we direct the Humboldt County Engineers' Office to install the eight signs in the rural portion of the county at no cost to this, for this, and that they be installed thirty days after we've received the signs, within thirty days.
We have a motion with Jerry, the county engineer, to have all the road signs...
At no cost.
At no cost, within thirty days upon receipt of the signs. Rick, you second.
I'll second on the motion.
Another discussion.
And that should be state private, receipt of these signs delivered at the DOT location nearest us. Put that in the motion too, so it's clear.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion as indicated, say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried. Anything else for us, Alyssa?
I think so.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Alyssa.
Yes, you're welcome.
Good program.
That should be enough for veterans. You know, it's in other counties.
Well, it's...
It'll get us a few good employees and...
That way, our county engineer can fill them the way he wants to. If he wants to put it on a sign or separate post, and then he can get the permits and get it...
A lot of them in Webster County are just on a separate post.
I think that's probably the best way.
The DOT thing.
Yeah, I think that's almost better than, you know, the way, if you get two on a si- on a post, that's a lot of wind, you know, to deal with.
Okay, little time before Paul shows up here, we'll get some action, and discuss action, authorize chairman to sign a letter, EBA, ground water level, the legal regulations. Okay, what happened here? I wonder if you got copies of this?
Yeah, we did, one time.
The fellow from, kept calling me for a couple of weeks about trying to get some more material, EPA...
I guess you sent us a text on that.
...you talked about, combined with us, all kinds of things, so what we had was a sample letter that we had to send to, to our legislators, and I saw nothing wrong with us as the board of supervisors going directly to that, and sent a copy to Peggy, so you could see what they were saying. Anybody having comments or discussion about that? Do you want one to go to Ernst, and one we go to King, and one we go to Grassley?
Who, who, I know you sent an email, and I've forgotten already who's, who initiated again? Hold on. What's coming, what, I, no, I have that email, I didn't, I didn't bring it to the phone.
Brian B., Assistant to the President Senior Advisor to the White House.
Okay.
Evidently, they're contacting every supervisor in the United States, it sounds like Lisa and I.
Yeah.
Trying to get us to slow down a little bit.
Wow, these kind of regulations are going to be expensive for everybody, if they're not thawed out, I don't know.
At first, when they called, I thought it was, it was, the more I checked into it, it looked legit, and asking to send me an email verifying it, and this is what we got. So if we pass this resolution, each of us are supposed to sign that, put it on the letterhead to the county, and fire it to these people. So if you guys don't disagree, I would entertain a motion to authorize us to sign this letter. Want to go, Harland?
I'll second.
Say, Rick.
They called me twice at home, too.
You got the same call.
You did, yeah.
Almost not be home, I didn't get a call.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried, and we'll have King do all the work of sending, sending the letter. Thanks, Peggy.
Well, it's definitely, it's gonna do it.
All right.
Everybody else?
Sure.
Next item, to appoint a member to the Midas Board. All of us being vacating this situation as of twenty-fifth of this month, I believe, that Harland, right, Harland?
Thirty.
No, no, no.
Last meeting is, meet signatures on the county board.
And usually, what, what's that mortgage set, the eight counties, nine counties?
Six.
Six counties, you have a mayor, economic developer, and supervisor of each county. What is the...
Typically, yeah. Are we gonna, are we gonna get a new building in your future?
Yeah.
What is that going to be?
By the water tower.
Oh, yeah, you did tell us that, by the water, the new water tower.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's expensive, you know, too, it sounds.
Where did I just see one of those? Who, who built one of the last?
Claryn just built it.
That's where I saw it. Really a nice building.
Yeah.
I think Claryn is where I, is it about six stalls, or five, six?
I don't know, it's right by the county engineer's shop out there.
Yeah, I went by it, and I thought, wow, that is sharp.
I read something about, I'm on Humboldt County, getting it costs a million dollars. It'd be quite a building.
So you've seen some information on...
It'd be really, you have to watch pay and all that stuff in there.
I think it was about a six stall, and about five or six, it's a pretty good size.
How many buses we got?
Well, you don't, you don't know how many we have here, do you?
And this one, I, I'm sure you're really interested in being honest, I just got read two of my boards, I wouldn't mind sharing them, because I don't want to hog it so bad.
Well, you know what, Carl, I think you should, I mean, this is a suggestion that I'm going to take, is, if, you know, if you, you take that, and I'll talk about it later on our committee reports, but I took the, um, Iowa drainage thing, because I think it's really important we have somebody in Humboldt, because I'm going to be signing checks now. I, I, you know, Michelle said it wouldn't have, probably be until around the twentieth, and she called me the first day, she had an insurance claim, and I went, geez, you sure took advantage of, and she just laughed, but what I think we should do is cover these, and then when the new person gets elected, I think we want to, I, I was thinking about maybe giving up my CFR one, because we're in good shape now, that would be a good one for the new person, and then I'll stay on CSS, because that's pretty complicated, but then I'm not just doing all mental health issues, that way we all get a little taste of, of different things, and I think I'll, this drainage is going to work out good for me, because we, we definitely want to stay on this drainage, but we don't want to lose our position on that with this stuff going on, so that's kind of what I'm thinking. So Carl, maybe that's what you could do, too. Alyssa, you wanted to take this one.
I'd be happy to take Midas.
Okay. Well, I'd make a motion to appoint Carl Mattis to replace Harland Hansen as a member of the Midas Board. Does that give it?
July first.
July first.
Other discussion? You second?
Me, your second.
I'll second.
Okay, those in favor of appointment to Midas Board, say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried. Do we need an action item on Jerry's appointment to the...
It's not on the agenda, we'll have to, for next week, I made the note, okay?
Yeah, I just got, yeah, I'll talk about it later. I just got elected on that, so...
Authorized Chairman to sign contract, blue with construction, law enforcement center, petition to move out. Rick, how are we coming on that? Do I have to sign that?
They want a contract. I think you should sign the contract, probably.
You're going to sign the inspection one, right?
Yep, and change orders, things like that. Um, of course, we already got one change order, we found asbestos in the building as we started clearing things out.
More tile.
And, uh, so they're going to get some bids on that, probably, maybe already have one, suppose, or whoever.
The architect can run that through separately, it actually would probably lower the cost savings to the owner.
Oh, really?
Instead of handing it through us.
I'll, I'll, I'll visit with him then, to date on that. And, uh, the offices are pretty well cleared out, the deputies have been busy, a couple of two and three nights this last week, clearing things out. Uh, the only thing that's in the building right now is dispatch and nine-one-one is still, as of, must have been Friday afternoon, she was still in there, they're getting her moved over also, and...
Been digging out back.
Yep, they got the new, new conduits and lines, ran from the little cement building into the...
They're working pretty hard on that last year.
Yeah, they got that all ready to go. Um, I went in Sunday to flight pull down.
Again, I love...
I asked Dean, I go, what's going on in that flight? He says, I don't know, they says, they'll probably just scrap it out, and I said, well, we can't have that, so I went and took that down. So I'm going to see if somewhere I can store it.
Well, you got, you got a nice shed, don't you, Rick? That's all, huh?
Okay, we have motion to authorize signing of the contract, but whatever. Motion by Harland?
I'll second, because Anthony wants to get paid. I let him up here for the rolls, but I don't think he wants to get started. He wants to get started, too, now that we're good.
All those in favor of signing the contract, blue with evidence, I would say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried. Next item, authorized chairman to sign solutions, license contract, code support agreement. Peggy, tell us about that.
Every year, we try to contact with Solutions for our software. Um, it provides all the software for the county engineer's office, the treasurer, the reporter, the auditor, um, there's even a few other minor offices in there, but that's the main stuff. It covers cable, planes, um, everything there, and I also gave you a copy of the letter from Solutions telling what the upgrades were.
The highlights, the change, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I highlighted the things that I thought were important. Um, not only do we have Solutions do our software, but when we first started with Solutions, everybody had their computer, and if you wanted something done with your computer that wasn't working right, you had to call IBM or Lenovo or somebody, and it takes forever to get an actual body on a phone to talk to you, and then sometimes they totally do not understand what you're talking about.
Or you don't understand them, you know?
Solutions would do that, but they started charging for it, and they should, because they're not, they weren't in the business at that time of taking care of your actual computer, they were in the business of supplying the software for you. So they do that seamlessly. If you have a problem with your computer, you call them. Unless it's some actual, um, hardware malfunction there, then, you know, you might call IBM or Lenovo, but otherwise, they can take care of it.
About half the counties in Iowa are always Solutions, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, you need to authorize somebody, uh, chairman to sign the license code support agreement for fifteen to sixteen.
So that fee down here...
The license code support agreement is the software.
Okay.
Yeah. So that final, if you look on the...
I'm looking for that, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's the, it's right on the...
Back of this one?
Yeah, the total.
There's the number, I was trying to find it, sorry. Didn't see the back side.
Humboldt, we authorize chairman to sign...
And that's fairly close to where we've been, where our numbers...
Yeah, it went up a little, I think they explained the treasurers went up a little.
There was a couple of increases they showed there, but, well, I think you've been real happy with this for a long time.
We have an excellent working area.
On a, per cost basis, we had to have night keepers, and this, this, this is a really bad deal. I mean, we couldn't afford that, so...
And then you send them to all the schools they have to keep up with.
Because it doesn't sound like you...
And there really is only one other major player as far as the software for counties goes, and the counties that have them, some are happy, but there's a lot that are, would rather switch to something else, because they're not getting the, we're pretty lucky we've got very good software.
I'll make a motion, then have authorized chairman to sign this Solutions license code support agreement for...
Okay, Harland's...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you jumped in there. I was second, I couldn't...
Geez, you're quick. Well, we'll still let you do some...
Well, we thought you were going to just coast on out. You're not going to coast, apparently.
Okay, we have a motion, and second.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Have the chairman sign the license code support for Solutions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay.
And that's just review of what we're here, correct?
Yes, for your...
Now, continue on, one more item here on Solutions, before we're on it. Authorized Chairman to sign information technology service agreement.
And that has to do with the computer.
There's the one for twenty-four.
All right, I'll make the motion to, uh, make the service agreement.
I'll second by, more to sign the service agreement on Solutions. Other discussion? It's the annual thing, right?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried. Okay, I think we're a little behind on all the draft. Sorry about that. All data, application for construction.
This morning, we have one agendized item, approve application for construction on county right-of-way from Mid-American Energy Company for an overhead primary electric extension at ten forty-eight Ohio Avenue. This permit is to replace an existing pole to get it higher to span across the road to create a new service for, I think it's a green bin in this case, or something. Our, our concern was, uh, the pole was going to be replacing the pole, and then sometimes the guy wires get to be more of a problem than the pole, and I think Ben, uh, has reviewed that. If we had any comment, it would be the guy wires. Don't want guys in the four slopes, four slopes of the shoulder. The guys are often overlooked, the poles are the problem. I think it's fine, there is a guy there now, if they push back to where it was, it shouldn't be a problem.
Was this supposed to happen, Paul, immediately?
Uh, I don't know. Uh, I see concrete pads there, uh, for the, so I don't know. I imagine as long as it's, uh, my guess is, uh, harvested, be good to have it or done, but, uh, the contractor must not need it, because they've already done the concrete work. But Mid-Americans applied for it, uh, Mid-American will do it at their schedule, which is usually not too far off. They've already done the ones we've approved, they've done the ones on Highway Three, uh, for the hog ranch over there, uh, that was, did the horizontal war, you know, but anyway, uh, last week. The timetable is up to the applicant, but usually, they're fairly quick.
I'll make a motion for it, can they write away for Mid-American?
And motion for Red State by Harland to approve their county right-of-way application to Mid-America. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried.
Um, I have three copies for signatures for the chairman, otherwise, we have a bid letting on Wednesday, uh, for two, two box forwards, uh, well, a little more than boxes, they're, uh, uh, projects, uh, west of Chalamans and up, uh, on the, the Raggedy Block Top, so, uh, hopefully, we got a lot of interested contractors and competitive quotes. I did talk to one of suppliers Friday afternoon, and, uh, encouraged him to get the prices out sooner than later, because we have a couple, uh, interested from long distances, and if they don't get their price in on time, they either have to hand deliver a bid, or FedEx, or whatever, and, uh, yeah. Otherwise, uh, work session in a while.
Wednesday morning, right?
Wednesday morning, I believe it's...
Ten AM.
Ten AM, it's, uh, I didn't look at the, uh, agenda, but that's what I have on this. Yep, very good.
And that'll be out at your office, or you're right here? All right, all right.
And I think we're just going to be three of us here, by the time this year, you're going to be on a job.
Us three will be here.
Yeah.
Make it proud.
I hope so. We'll see, um, uh, the conversations are, uh, across the county, that bridges are something thirty percent higher than they've been, so, uh...
Well, we've had a good run-up to mail.
Say, hold on to your socks, it said.
More money flowing in to contractors of this.
Right now, we haven't added contractors. If, if, uh, with the steady stream, I would think that we'd be adding contractors now, because it's been feast or famine, uh, contracting business for the heavy construction hasn't been good a lot, for roads anyway, those guys are loaded back there for roads, so...
Thank you, Paul.
I need help today.
We have a work session, you have, you can do that here.
Hey, Carl, we need to go back to item number two on the second part, we haven't done the deputy salaries.
Always get them.
Get that.
I don't know, but I, I checked with Peggy before I said it, he was too sure.
I'm glad about that. Two deputy salary certification elected official, this will be all the deputies in various offices.
Right. Um, we ask them every year to give us a certification of where their deputies are at, and I can either pass these or make copies, or whatever it will do, but it has a little bit different for deputies, but it would include the reporter, um, the treasurer, myself, the sheriff.
This is the percentage of the elected official, the deputy, who weighs their base department.
Yep, and it wouldn't be what they put in their budget when we approved our budget in March for next fiscal year, it's the same percentage that they were, um, talking to you about at that time.
No, you have one deputy in each of those situations. If you have larger county, you can have more than one deputy, right?
Right, the treasurer has three deputies, um, reporter has two, and I have one.
Treasurer has...
And the sheriff's present.
Treasurer has three, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I skipped over that.
I had to tell it, well, I thought we had, but I didn't.
Do I hear a moment?
We got to.
To approve the deputy's certification, we elected officials.
Also move.
Second by more. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried. Did we miss anything out, Peggy?
I think so.
Start with the report.[1558.12] Sorry, I skipped over that.
I had to tell it to you. Well, I thought we had, but I didn't.
Do I hear?
We got to.
To approve the deputy's certification, we elected officials.
Also move.
Second by more. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Did we miss anything out, Peggy? Start with reports. Jerry, what'd you do this week?
Alright. Get these back to you, Peggy. Alright, let's see. Let's see, Monday was, was Monday was the day we went out?
I guess our first adventure was Monday afternoon about one o'clock. Rick, myself and Rick Hopper, or not Rick, Trish, three of us went out because Rick was, Hopper was busy. And we checked on some, our last project over there by, the last project over, oh, what was that, one-ten?
One-ten.
One-ten. Which would've been about four years ago, I guess now. And we wanted to check on contractors' workmanship and we went out in the CRP because we were concerned of settling and stuff. We thought at first there might be a lot of suck holes, but I think we determined, Rick and I both independently had the same thoughts and, Rick, go ahead and tell what you thought we saw there, I mean, when we were walking along there. Otherwise, I'm gonna tell.
Yeah, there's a lot of depressions that were knee deep. There's a, I mean, there's a lot of them and we come to the conclusion this ground has never been leveled because it was done through CRP acres. So basically it's just been backfilled and I think the tile was ten to twelve foot deep, so there's gonna be a fair amount of settling in, something like that. But I do think there was a couple of places that looked like it might've been sucking dirt. There's a few holes that were four foot deep and I think that's way more than settling. So, and sometimes tile will suck a little dirt for a while until they seal themselves. And I think we come to the conclusion this fall, we're gonna ask for permission to go in our disc over the top of the tile line and disc it black.
Get it leveled again.
Level it up, disc it black.
See which ones sucked in the spring.
Come and reevaluate next summer and see if there's any suck holes and then repair them at that time.
We were nervous because Doug Marshall thought that they were starting to take and they thought there might be forty different locations. Well, I was going a different direction, Rick was going the other. He come up before I could say it, he said the same thing. I was thinking, well, this ground has never been sealed, it's never been leveled off completely. And some of them just seemed like settling to me just because of the amount of dirt they would had to move. Another deal out there, Rick, Post, I'm sorry, Rick Post, said there's a couple of natural suck holes out there. So, one of them is a pretty big area, it could just be another natural one that's seeping into the water, into the water and natural sinkhole. Yeah. And, you know, so that kinda makes sense and I think the only best way to make sure is that maybe like we said, I talked to Gary Yoke and I think that's something we could work out where we could level that down, you know, and I think Rick would probably level it. Just to make it sure it was level and then go from there, so.
So last week we talked about twelve, you talked to.
That's where he thought, well, that's where he thought there might be up to forty. He's got twelve flags out there and we looked at every one of it, that's where some of these, there are a couple that looks shooting straight down maybe four feet, but, you know, they may have settled out too. I think the main thing, the best way we'll be able to tell is to level it all up and then start over and see what it does.
Yeah. Whether, let it go through a winter and see what happens.
But that being said, I mean, Rick can talk about it next, we did that and then we went out and looked at the project that's going on right now. We just happened to be in the area when they were going underneath the Anheuser's gas line out there, so there was a representative out there watching their every move because it's gas line. They had to work around, dig it out and fill it back in. My understanding was, Rick, when you talked to him, that pipe's gotta be no nicks, no scratches or nothing. They'll go to cover or they.
He brushes all the little rocks away from it and inspects it before they cover it back up. Says they don't work unless he's sitting there watching them.
But, an appreciation of Peggy letting Trish go out that day, I think she got a good lesson on how the tiling project goes, it was really beneficial for her. And we were pleased to see how they were wrapping. You go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, they were using fabric, wrapping all their joints, they're putting rock under every tile.
Using the plastic plugs.
Using plastic plugs. They're doing an excellent job and they're fitting them nice and tight together and, the boss guy's running the setting the tile.
And I think two things to tell, they were doing a good job. Number one, they were using the box to set these tiles down in so that, and they were getting their grade. And I, I mean, when they laid that one in, we saw it, when they put it in, there was no gap.
Yeah.
Like it should be between those, you know, and you've got the width that overlaps out like that, but there was no gaps on that project.
When you say a box, what do you mean by that?
Well, a steel box.
Yeah, they pull it along to protect the workers down in the box and keep it.
But they did get a final grade in there and then, and then when they swing that down and have things moving around, it kinda sells it down.
You know, and they're backfilling as they're going. So they go twenty-four feet, maybe that's how long that box was, and they lay three tile and they're backfilling, slide it ahead. So if you do get a good gush of rain, you ain't gonna have the issues like they had out.
There's four guys there and everyone were doing something and every one of those machines are almost brand new. So that was a good feeling, I mean, the main two, they were just like brand new. I don't know if they, maybe they were probably brand new.
Or else repainted.
They really looked nice, but they, you know, they didn't mind, we stood there probably, what, an hour?
Yeah, watched them.
And I think Trish, she couldn't believe how deep, of course, that hole was deep, you know, and we were down in the clay, we were down in the blue clay, they were mucking out blue clay, this thing is really deep.
And we walked along, looked at the tile, it had strung out and they were in good shape. And they, I don't know if they'd marked them and inspected each one, but somebody had shot a little bit of green paint on each one.
Okay, so felt good about that. And even better, on the backside, could you have loaded it any better?
No, they had it.
No rock?
They had it cleaned up, ready to plant on the backside.
So it just shows you there are contractors that can do it the way it's.
Doing a beautiful job, in my opinion.
So that part was good to see.
I was impressed.
Good to hear some good news sometimes.
Yeah, we were kinda glad to hear some good news.
Yeah.
And when we left, they, they usually have to charge admission. I said, well, okay, charge the supervisor, but don't charge Trish. Yeah, charge us. So then we went up, where else would go, Rick? We went and looked at the pond a little bit, where that's gonna be like, they've started cutting trees and, you know, we're hoping that project's gonna be a go. And then we ran up to Rinnick and looked at another bulkhead that we're gonna talk to Rick.
Yeah, it has to be, I think the bulkhead's gonna have to be removed because the water's running under the bulkhead, it's gonna be really bad.
Yeah, it's just worn out, it's, those gas tiles aren't feeding, they're feeding underneath it, so.
Yeah, there's some issues there. One, there's a tile there, there's nothing coming out of it and there's water coming up underneath the bulkhead, so obviously the tile's broke back inside there or something.
And that's on that road up north of Hardy, which, you know, we might be looking at nineteen for repaving, so it might be nice to have that cleaned up. That's all I had, I think.
Yeah, then we went down to Thor and looked at that.
Oh, yeah.
Also.
That's right.
The upcoming project.
We looked at the bulkhead that Doug Marshall's gonna repair and we picked out, after I showed these guys, I think that's the best way to save, we can save that, so.
You can be getting.
Who's on the five-three? Oh, and I wanna thank, I'd just like to thank Pat and his board members, they got the ATV thing out for the last year's and had it ready to go and we used it all afternoon, so we got a chance to drive that out. Very efficient, but no rain. The weather on.
Did you wash it?
It was dusty, it wasn't muddy, but it was a little dusty.
That's all I had. Yeah, well, I was out with Jerry all, all day Monday and, you know, it was good to see that work that's being done out there, Denver's doing a super job. And the, one thing, the risers or the connections were cement pipe that were cemented to the tile. They weren't just busting holes and sticking pipe in them. They had actually had a pipe cemented to them previously, way out ahead, they had them already done and.
Yeah, they were ready to go, they knew what they were gonna do.
They had their wrap, skid row every so often, you'd see a bundle of wrap inside the tile, and we got their pile of rock there and their rock box and.
We saw a couple forty-eight inch ones that had a elbow put in them already. They were just honey bells. They are gonna swing it, they're gonna put an elbow.
No, they didn't know we were coming.
No.
No, we just dropped in on them and, uh, they're doing just a nice clean job. I don't know whether they're putting their rock that they dig up, I suppose they're burying it some, because it's, it's a deep tile, it was probably twenty-five foot deep where we were at. Plenty of moisture coming out of the ground.
Another thing we knew that was, we could tell they were doing their job, there was piles of gravel spaced out so they all use gravel underneath for a little bit of a base to make sure that settles and they even strung a little on top, didn't they, Rick?
They put a little rock over the, over the fabric.
Kinda hold that in place, so.
Well, they have to wrap the fabric. I mean, they wrapped the fabric down, put the tile on top, the fabric wrapped it up around, so they're not just throwing it over the top of the tile either, it's all the way around. So they're doing a great job. Um, let's see what else today. Oh, so I was out there all day Monday and then, can't even remember what day, I've been down to LEC three times this week, looked at different things and, uh, keeping tabs on that. And Sunday after, I talked to Dean late Friday afternoon, it just popped in my head, what about the flag pole that's sitting there? He says, I don't know, he says, I suppose they'll just grab it out and throw it in the junk. And I said, well, we might wanna reuse that, so I took my boys in with me, we put the skid row and picked the flag pole up and I got it up to my house right now, so.
Yeah, that's probably a pretty decent one.
Oh, it's still in some foot long.
Yeah, we don't need it.
Paint it before you bring it back, Rick.
He probably would.
I, it's painted silver, but I don't think it's stainless, it's a little bit rusty. You said we need a new one? That's what Dean said and I said, we'll see what all the budget turns out. That's why I'm saving it.
Yeah, you already started out with a good call there.
Yeah, and that's another thing, I had a call from an architect, they found asbestos, so they're doing, gonna have to mitigate that.
And the flooring, right.
Flooring, which is, if you're gonna have asbestos, that's the best place to have it, it's easiest to remove, the cheapest to remove. Better than asbestos pipes, because then, then that gets real expensive.
That'd be a, Rick, a big thanks for all the work you've done on that, you've been really great for us.
Let's wait till we're done.
Well, before we go on, I guess I did go Wednesday with Harland, or Harland's at something. We gave Harland a ride back because he behaved well at the meeting, but I was drainage, I was at a drainage district association meeting in Pocahontas at nine-thirty, I guess, on Wednesday and Stan Watney picked me up and, and we got over there and Harland received a nice plaque for fourteen years, fourteen years of service, was it? No, how many years was it, Harland?
Drainage district, it's probably been twenty.
Twenty years?
Corbett's been on fourteen years.
Oh, that's what it was. So they did recognize him, which was nice, it was a nice plaque. Knowing Harland, he's not gonna bring that up, rather, it was a nice plaque. And a good group of people, I guess, it's what's, was impressive, or I guess my luck, not being on the board yet, was, we've got a representative from Webster County, Cassu, Pocahontas and Humboldt, right? So you could, that should tell you a lot about where the drainage.
And Ammet County.
And Ammet, but the ones that I.
Yeah, I'll tell it off to them.
That's probably nice to do in drainage.
But it kinda gets you thinking, why are those members serving? Because drainage is a big issue in our area, it really is and there's a lot gonna be going on with this lawsuit and stuff and I'm sure that's gonna be something I wanna keep up on, but, all that being said, then, they needed a new president, vice president and I, well, we got Keith Denclaw to be president and I did take vice president because I've been assigned for all the checks since our auditing's done out of Anderson's and our bill paying's out of there. It really would be a good deal to have somebody, Humboldt represent on that board because it makes the bill pay, you know, kinda, they, they know they can call, Michelle knows now, she texts me on her nose and get me the next day, so. So I, she said about twice a month, there'd probably be bills paid by someone unexpected, but I really like the way they're doing their accounting system. You know, we had our, I guess we had our annual report too for the year and it's, for the money we have to spend to have them take care of the business side, it's the best way to go. I mean, it's very efficient, very, you know, it's unbiased and, you know, we don't have to worry about accountability of anything else, type of accounting firms, so, that's all.
Let's see, one, the tenants, the FD cap in Washington. Last time I reported on this was when McGon wanted, well, we had, we had made a contract on it for ninety-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. And McGon for next year wanted two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. There's just no way we could pay that, you know? If we haven't, we haven't got that kind of money, but, anyway, the schools really liked the program, that Munt House and schools. And maybe they can help sustain this program a little bit because if they don't, July first, it expires. We don't know yet, McGon might give us all the information we need. And they're focusing now, we'll see, we've got a telecon for this next one today, so I'll find out more.
More, I'm sure you found that McGon's not always easy to work with.
No.
They give twenty-three years sometimes to get paid on stuff. The system is just bogged down, I don't know how to say it any better.
Yeah. I don't know if the, if the schools like it, maybe they'll take it over some day.
How many schools did you work with, more?
I think there's three.
Three? That'd be pretty expensive, wouldn't it?
That's the way they are. The supervisor in Wright County, he had talked to some of the schools and they seemed real interested in it. Maybe they'll keep it going, we'll see. If that was on my head.
Okay, last Monday we had a Langfield meeting here at one o'clock and we only had one bid for the work out there, so we delayed it till today at one o'clock. And I know we do have one additional bid, I don't know if you've received any near office.
I don't know if he may, but I'll look at it.
So we've got that meeting coming up at one o'clock. And then Wednesday, the IDVA meeting, we did the budget and approved that for next year, give John a little raise and went over the financial figures. I think they made a good choice, getting Jerry on there to sign checks and keep track of things. And the legislature's put one point nine eight thousand, or one point nine eight million in the, had drainage well fund again, so if the governor signs it, and I think he will, I don't think there's a problem here with our funds to maybe get Mr. Williams' well closed and so forth. And the legislature, everything's gone through that we wanted, so I think we're in good shape there.
I think we did decide to put like five thousand or something.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna.
At latter end of mitigation.
Towards mitigation, be a partner with other counties, I thought that was a good, you know, that shows support from us to.
I guess I'm a little disappointed with some of the counties that have voted not to do this, like Boone County, you know, they've got drainage, so we'll have to see how that goes, but, I think a lot of these people think that, you know, that's just a, if we don't have drainage, whatever, it's just a.
They don't realize it's gonna be a point source issue.
That's right. They don't understand how, how far reaching this whole issue is and, I mean, really, you should send it to every city and burg in the state of Iowa because they're gonna make that affluent coming out of your sewers lagoon the point source. I mean, it's just much a point source as a tile line and, it's gonna be a big, oh, it's just unbelievable how big I think it's could be. And then last Thursday, we had our, it used to be the CCM, County Case Management, now it's Case Management and Mental Health Disability Services meeting. We went over our budget and with a lot of counties dropping out of County Case Management, they come up with a new twenty-eight E agreement. You know, Carl was on there to be vice president and we dropped out, so a lot of reshuffling there. But one of the things that Deb is working on, the state is putting out requests for bids or proposals and it's gonna be about eight to ten companies proposal to take over this whole mental health system. And from the way I understand it, the state's gonna pick two to four companies and see how it works. Well, what we've got at ISAC is that whole system of reporting and keeping track and so forth. So once they have selected two or four companies, she's gonna meet with them and see if they would be interesting in piggybacking on or let us work with them because the timeline is very short according to the bill to get everything completed. She doesn't think that any private company can fill that gap that quick. And Brad thinks that the accounting part, the financial part wouldn't be a big problem for them to take on. And Jeanette Scott, the ISAC conflated guru down there, doesn't think it'd be that big a deal to blend that in with their system, so we'll have to wait and see how that turns out. So that was it.
Very good. I was down, the morning Wednesday, we had the legislative proposal meetings for supervisors making proposals or resolutions for next year. And always before, we had road tax at number one. They moved that to number two this year after they, they wanted, they put some other wording in there, they got the twenty, the ten cents. They wanna get something in there, continue to fund that because they realize that's gonna run out. But they moved mental health to number one, there's still a lot of concern about getting mental health properly funded. And they thought they needed to put the entrance beside that. And they did drop funding out completely for road use, but they helped mental health easily, worked out a little bit.
Here's your tip.
Because a lot of counties are really suffering. Third one we had was property tax relief. You know, with the property tax bill that went through last year, a lot of counties are gonna be in big trouble now because credits are getting corporations within the communities. And with that bill, with that resolution, they're also talking about decoupling farm buildings, they helped the counties a little bit, will they still anywhere, I don't know. They're also trying to talk about getting some more funding for licensing of heavy vehicles used in rural areas. Iowa's got ten dollars, I don't understand whether the ten dollars, state's got three hundred, or hunting wagons and those kinda things. They're gonna, Bill's gonna put something together, we'll come back and review that later on, but Bill was there, Bill Rickard. Rickard?
Heckro.
Heckro, our legislative guy. Lewis was there, Danny was there. And we just kicked around those things and they'll give a proposal back to all of the state, we'll have to go next year. And during that meeting also, a representative, the chairman of the committee from Sack County, anyway, he appears on the same thing we were talking about, Harland, about the importance of getting some money together to help fight this lawsuit. And they were hopeful that they get some more counties involved. I kinda got the opinion, they were a little disappointed when the money was going through the drainage district, considered ready to then, they didn't come around and say that.
That's, that's been the problem of, you know, the supervisor from Stevie County was at the CCMS board meeting and we got talking a little bit. The attorney for Sack County, like I've said before, is very distrustful, he doesn't really get along with the other counties, really, so they're, you kinda got Sack County and their attorney stirring the pot all the time and.
With Stevie, what's the third county?
Scott Jacobson.
Scott, honest as days long.
And, you know, the first meeting when John and I met with the three boards and their attorneys, well, that's the thing they said, well, IDVA came in and sucked all the air out of the room, because, you know, and, but there's so many advantages of going through the IDVA that. IDVA came in and sucked all the air out of the room, cause, you know, and, uh, but there's so many advantages of going through the IDVA that, uh.
I think Harland, what this shows and it's gonna show through this whole battle is, we get all these attorneys involved and they're all wanting to get their name out there, they all wanna get a piece of the pie, so they're gonna stir this thing up and they're gonna, this thing's gonna get melt, to blast them on the attorney's side. And the sad thing goes for counties, what don't they understand about our drainage? If anybody's outside of their county is willing to help, it's extra money for the suit, why mess around with lawyers trying to figure out who's gonna hold the money? And we need some accountability as outside players because if this thing got settled, I mean, we don't wanna write a fifteen thousand dollar check. If it goes on longer and we have to commit more, we need to have some say in what we're doing.
Yeah.
I mean, why do they always muck it up?
Well, I asked Tim from, uh, BD County, and I says, well, when do your three county drainage attorneys step out of the picture? You know, we hired, we hired them from, uh.
That's a good.
Des Moines, how long are you gonna pay these guys to, uh, sit around and muck up the water?
Do you think you really want our drainage money to pay them or we got one of you?
I mean, let's get to the point of this thing.
Yeah.
That's the sad part, instead of drag out and be a messy, messy deal.
I think some of these supervisors on this committee got their eyes opened because we had them all over Iowa, some in Missouri, line, Davis County, some in Bill Andrew, they did.
Oh, yeah.
They sat there for multiple, they didn't know what was stopping them.
They had no idea, yeah.
It was interesting to hear, assuming we worked the jury a lot.